We'll call a committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for April 26, 2023 to order. Will the court please call a roll?
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of April 12, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstain.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, the motion's approved eight zero with one abstention. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Item A is an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Illinois Department of Transportation for cities' costs associated with improvements that it will be coordinating with IDOT at the Illinois Route 31 and US Route 20 intersection improvements. Staff from the city and IDOT recognize the opportunity for collaborating on improvements to the upcoming bridge replacement at Route 31 over Route 20. These improvements include the city making improvements to its existing water main, sanitary sewer, and well as additions for emergency vehicle pre-anchoring systems, fiber optic cable conduit extensions, and a multi-use path construction, other words, a bike path on this new bridge. IDOT is estimating the city's cost share for these items to be in the amount of $2.4 million. This item is on both agendas. Public Works Director Mike Povens is here to answer any questions regarding this. And for those that want to know, the improvements to the bridge will include a wider, longer two-pan structure with a center pier located in the median that will accommodate left turn lanes from both Illinois Route 31 in both directions, along with increased lateral and vertical clearance on US 20. Dedicated right turn lanes are also being added from Route 31 on each of the entrance ramps. The project additionally includes interchange lighting, traffic signal modernization and provisions for pedestrian and bicyclist accommodations, ADA ramps, and drainage system improvements. Again, Mr. Povens is here to answer any questions relating to the city's contributions to this project.
It's on both agendas, so we don't need a motion. Are there any questions for staff in the council? Ms. Public.
Manager Cozel, could you just clarify for the public when this is scheduled, when the bridge construction is scheduled to begin?
I can't provide that information specifically. Perhaps Mr. Povens will. This is contingent upon IDOT now going out to the market and soliciting bids.
Thank you. It's our understanding that IDOT wants to put this on the June letting. So that means it has to go through the bidding process. They have to open and review bids and award it. So it's possible there could be some work starting this fall. We've not received verification from IDOT yet exactly what the schedule is going to be. It is going to be a two-year project, though. So I would estimate that the majority of the work will begin in earnest next spring. But they could do some preliminary work out there, clearing, preparing things for traffic control, et cetera.
Great. I know I was at a neighborhood meeting for Swan about a month or so ago, and there were some representatives there talking about this project. So I know there's definitely interest, in particular from that neighborhood, because obviously it affects them and really affects the whole area. So just want them to continue to keep those lines of communication open as we go through this process.
Anything else for Mike? Well, he's up there. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B is the Poplar Creek Flood Mitigation Master Plan. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, popularly referred to as FEMA, published revised preliminary flood insurance maps for Poplar Creek in 2018 that affect approximately 528 parcels within the city. Staff hired H.R. Green to validate the hydrologic data and input parameters that were used in creating this revised FERMA map. Three years later, in 2021, H.R. Green published its findings in a technical memorandum entitled "Poplar Creek Floodplain Study Review." This validated the revised FERMA findings. Staff then engaged H.R. Green to review the Poplar Creek watershed to identify potential projects that can mitigate some of the impacts of the pending updated flood maps. H.R. Green has completed its review of the Poplar Creek watershed and is recommending improvements at four locations that will improve bridge and channel capacity to move stormwater downstream more efficiently. This evening, city engineer Ron Rudd is going to be presenting a presentation seeking the council's permission to obtain a proposal for an engineering services agreement from H.R. Green to perform the preliminary stormwater engineering studies necessary to seek grant applications for flood mitigation projects within the Poplar Creek floodplain. How are you, Mr. Rudd?
I'm good. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Captain, members of the council, Manager Cozel. Let me see if I can pull this up here. So as Manager Cozel mentioned, we've been engaged with H.R. Green to try to validate and update some information that FEMA is publishing some new maps in the near future here. So with me this evening is Mr. Ajay Jain. He's with H.R. Green. He's their lead. What is your title, Ajay? He's the Water Resource Practice Leader. So he's everything water-related for stormwater stuff. And we go to H.R. Green and their staff on numerous occasions to get information relative to stormwater. So as we go along, I've got a quick agenda here. We're going to show you some, do some vocabulary lessons. So we're all on the same page with the terminology we're talking about. We provide you a location map of where we're talking about and the watershed that's within Poplar Creek and the Lord's Park Tributary to that area, some history on what we've done. Some of this information's already in your agenda packet, but it'll be available for other questions if need be. The preliminary maps, which have been published and are available for comment, and that's why we hired H.R. Green to validate that information, the impacts that that's going to have to the city and the residents. And then we're going to review H.R. Green's alternatives that they're looking at possibly getting done so that we can kind of go backwards. The floodplain's going to expand, and if we can do some of these projects, the floodplain may go get reduced again. And then we'd go back to FEMA and republish some maps, but that would definitely be down the road. And then some recommendations to minimize the impacts of the maps, like I mentioned. So moving forward, the vocabulary lesson here. So these terms, you may be familiar with them, but we'll just refresh. So FEMA is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and they publish flood insurance rate maps, or called FERMA maps. They used to be large, you know, 36 by 24 panels. Now it's all obviously digital that's available to you. You can type in your address anywhere in the city, and you'll see if you're in a floodplain. And there's a number of residents within the city that are in floodplains and with these new maps being published that that's going to expand. The Illinois State Water Survey is one agency who provided additional information to FEMA to update these FERMA maps, and that's the information that H.R. Green reviewed and validated, that it was accurate since we somewhat questioned it at the beginning when they first published it. The floodplain, these are always terms that kind of are nebulous to people in some regards. It's the area with a 1% chance of flooding in any given year, and it depends on the watershed and how large it is and times of concentration and all this technical stuff that Ajay could go to lunch with you and talk to you ad nauseam about. But it's essentially the area that's going to flood within that 1%, whichever everybody calls the 100-year event, which is somewhat of a misnomer because it changes based on the watershed and stuff. The floodway is the area where the water has to pass through, so it's kind of like the channel that the water flows in when you have that 1% chance flow. And the watershed is the area that drains to a given point or waterway. So something like, you know, down in New Orleans, the watershed is the whole east part of the United States practically. But by us, the watershed for Poplar Creek is tributary to the Fox River right by the Metro tracks that were just redone. Poplar Creek and Lord's Park Tributary are in the southeast portion of the city. It goes outside the city. You know, the watershed doesn't have any political boundary, so to speak. It encompasses South Barrington, Hoffman Estates, Streamwood, and it comes into Elgin. The headwaters are starting up in South Barrington. Now as the water flows downstream, there's more tributaries that add water to the flow, and so there's a time of concentration as the water moves downstream to peak at certain places. The watershed's about 44 square miles or about 28,000 acres of land that it encompasses. And when we did our original findings or studies, we actually met with members of Hoffman Estates and Streamwood to see if we could collaborate on projects that might benefit both them and the city. But given that they're so far upstream, most of the things that would help them weren't necessarily going to help us because we're farther downstream, and we get more water as it comes downstream. A brief history of how this transpired. So in 2008, FEMA published their current maps, and they update their maps every, what do you say, 20 years, something like that? It varies. Those were the original maps. And in 2018, they informed the city that they had some new information, and there were going to be pending updates to these maps. We met with them in Barrington, and they had a preliminary risk review meeting, and they went over the information that they were providing to the city, and they actually published those preliminary maps in 2019. We originally questioned them back when we met with them and said, you know, "It seems like this is expanding a little farther than we would anticipate because some of the areas already we questioned with their flooding." And that's why we engaged H.R. Green to review the data that they had. We just weren't sure about it, and we couldn't just send them a letter and said, "Hey, we don't believe you." They needed to have something, you know, quantitative. They wanted to see some numbers. So H.R. Green got the data that they used. They ran the same models, and they concurred, as Manager Cozel said, that this information is going to change the maps and impact the city. So in last year, we asked H.R. Green to move forward with trying to come up with some plans to see how we could mitigate some of this. And we've been trying to be very proactive. As you can see, the maps still aren't going to expect it to become effective until next summer. But given that we knew there was going to be an impact to the city and the residents, we wanted to try to get ahead of the curve instead of waiting for them to get published and then come back and try to do something. So assuming that's the normal timeline that these maps go through, the floodplain maps will become effective next summer. So some of the impacts to the city. The floodway and the floodplain in that southeast portion of Elgin is going to increase significantly. The data that they provided has an increased flow downstream of 64%, and almost 400 existing properties in the floodplain will be impacted with higher flood elevations. So they're already in the floodplain, but with this new data, they will get flooded more. The elevation of the water will be higher. In addition, there's going to be 342 additional buildings that will come into the new floodway, and a total of 528 properties will be in the floodplain, which will all require flood insurance. If you have a mortgage, if you own the house outright, you can opt whether you want flood insurance or not. But any mortgage-backed house typically requires flood insurance. So these people who are in the floodplain now that are going to have a higher elevation, they probably will have to pay a larger premium. And some of the other people who never had flood insurance are going to be impacted by maybe getting a call from their insurance when they have to renew their homeowner's insurance to say, "You need some flood insurance," which they may or may not catch them off guard if they're aware of what's going on here. The current map shows that, this is like, let me see if I can zoom in here a little bit. Or you can see, there's two places where it's kind of a constraint, where Poplar Creek comes through. There's a culvert at Villa Street, and there's one over by Willard Avenue. They're both under Villa, but one's by, there's a small restaurant over here. I can't know the street off the top of my head. It's Kirk, I believe, and off of Willard where the water comes through. And the proposed map changes are going to take the water and have it go up and around as opposed to going straight through where we see it now. And so I'm going to toggle back and forth there by Kirk Avenue on these next couple of slides because you can see how it expands. So the striped area in red is the floodway, and the blue area is the floodplain. And a lot of the area that's blue is going to become the crosshatched red, which means it's a floodway. So it's much more restrictive to have buildings within the floodway. People who want to do additions to their houses and stuff like that are going to be limited a lot by what they can do because we follow the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance. And essentially, it says, "Don't build in the floodplain." And so a lot of these people are going to be limited with what they can do to their homes. And once again, the information here on the bottom shows the impacts that it's going to have to the city. So H.R. Green came through, and we looked at numerous options to do some changes to what's existing conditions out there. And we've got three different phases that we've come up with. The first one being expanding the culvert at Villa Street and Bluff City Boulevard. And if I go back to the previous slide, you can see those areas are bottlenecks, one being right here, Bluff City, and up here at Villa. It's kind of like, you know, it's a constraint for the water to go through under the road. And those areas there, if we can expand those culverts going under the road and convey the water downstream faster, it'll lessen the ability of the water to go up and around in this direction, which is what the new floodplain maps are essentially showing. So that's phase one. Phase two is actually quite an interesting concept, and it's to get the water to the Fox River a little quicker. If I go back up this way, the water would come this way through this channel as opposed to going down here. And the Metro and the U.P. Railroad is another bottleneck. You can see how it backs up in this whole area here. So H.R. Green came up with a concept to possibly go this way, and then that way would avoid the U.P. and the Metro trains, those bridges, those Metro bridges. And we're working with the railroad to try to expand a bridge, as would take decades, essentially, the way it is getting permitted through them. And the third phase that we would have is at Route 25 to expand that box culvert there. Instead of removing or replacing it, we're looking at possibly just adding an additional box culvert next to it to convey flow downstream. So this goes back to, once all the improvements, let me try not to give you a headache here as I toggle through these because this can be kind of... So this is the original conditions where we're at. This is what we would end up having with the preliminary maps. But with the revisions, we would go back to something that's in between of the two. We're not going to remove everybody from the floodplain if we did those three phases, but we're going to remove a large number of people. And so without getting too technical, I've tried to stay out of the weeds here and not hit too much data. But this one little map kind of shows you. I can explain something here, and it'll help you understand what we would do. This black line at the bottom is the stream bed of Poplar Creek from the Fox River going upstream. So this is the bottom of the stream bed. The current floodplain is this red line, and you can see where the bottlenecks are. The water profile goes up here at Bluff City and Route 20, US 20, and over here at Route 25. The proposed floodplain maps are the purple line at the top. So it has a significant increase here. I think it's up to four feet in some locations, the raise in the water level. If we put in the improvements, we would get back down to this blue line. So it would be a significant decrease in the amount of flooding, although there still would be an increase from the current maps that are effective. That's assuming we can get all those projects done. And what we would end up doing is going back to FEMA with new data, and they would redo the maps back the other way. If we can prove to them that these openings are bigger and the water conveys, H.R. Green would send them information, and then the Illinois State Water Survey would just do the opposite of what we did. They would validate our information and say, "Okay, you guys made improvements. We're going to take the floodplain maps and reduce them back to somewhere in between." The costs for all these projects is a rough, some rough numbers in 2022. I shouldn't say rough, real rough, because they spent a lot of time looking at these. And each one is pretty significant. Phase one is $9 million. Phase two is a total of eight, and phase three is almost, it's a million and a half totaling, whoop, let me go back, totaling $19 million almost. And there's no way we would want to try to attempt these ourselves, but that's why I'm here this evening, to try to, you know, explain what we're trying to do here and show you. There's these other agencies. We have, FEMA has funds. The MWRD, which has a really strong partnership, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, has really good programs to try to assist communities within Cook County or who's in their jurisdiction with projects. The IDNR, IDOT, Kane County, and the IPA all have funding resources that we want to try to leverage and get information available to them so that they could, we could apply for grants. And so this evening, that's kind of the essence of our presentation here is to ask for that, you know, desire to have a presentation to you that we have preliminary engineering from H.R. Green so we can apply for some of these grants. We're going back in summary. They published new FEMA FERMA maps. They're going to be effective next year. They're significantly impacting the floodplain in Elgin, with 528 properties being impacted. Those impacts are going to result in higher flood premiums for those individuals. And now that we have a Poplar Creek master plan from H.R. Green, we're proposing to implement some of those improvements. And so in essence, at the end of the day, we're just asking, you know, if we're going to come forward in the next couple of months with hopefully a presentation to or a proposal to engage H.R. Green to do some of this preliminary work. They need to have some data available for the grant applications. You can't just fill it out and say, you know, "Here's what we're looking for." They want to have some data. The more you have, the better chances are that you have that you've got accepted for one of those grants. And that's essentially what we're looking for. So any question?
Question for Mr. Rudd. Mr. Stefan.
A couple. Ron, thank you for the presentation. Jumping all over the place, first of all, what's the rationale for the division of the three phases? I'm looking at your table, and it's quickly apparent it's not to try to even the costs out because the third phase is much cheaper. Is it based on the need, like what's needed?
A lot of it's the impact. We looked at them. The first phase is the one that's going to have the biggest impact. You know, we could go to number three first, but it's not going to have the most bang for the buck.
Okay.
We're going to get more people out of the floodplain by doing phase one first.
Okay.
And so we're doing it in steps based on the structures that we could modify and getting more people out as quickly as possible.
Well, and let me back up a step and ask a question I think might be on everybody's mind. And has staff looked at this and considered whether it's cheaper to take the $19 million or just short of $19 million? It looks like it's going to cost us to try to fix this and just start buying houses and moving people out of the floodplain.
That's part of these. You can see here, the second column down here is property acquisition and easements. The city has been proactive in the past in purchase properties. To do some of the channel modifications, we would need to purchase some homes that are in the floodplain to do those modifications. So we got...
So it's included already to some extent?
It's included to some extent.
Yeah, so I think if I'm understanding the question, we did look at, if you did not do any improvements, then you just purchased the properties that were impacted, the value of those impacted properties around $46 million.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. I wanted to see if that analysis had been done.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Okay, great. Two more. When I looked at the more detailed information in the memo, it looks like these phases are attempting to widen the channel somewhat in these choke points, but also set up a floodway next to it where if there is a heavy rain, there's a way for water to get through. You're talking about a third culvert at 25, for instance. I've always thought that maybe we could do wildlife crossings as well. Is there some way to incorporate that into those floodway extra passageways for the overflow water? That's just a personal question I have.
Yeah, I don't think that would be very diff... I mean, it could be an extra box that would be attached.
Right.
Next to it or something like that. If they're going to get wider, you know, it may allow more wildlife to go through those simply because the flows would be lower when they weren't flooded. But it would be definitely something we could look at.
Okay. And lastly, kind of a broader question. Seeing that FEMA does these updates, and we've had this one now hit us for Poplar Creek, we've got other creeks like Tyler Creek and others, are we expecting this kind of a bad news scenario to hit us with other creeks in coming years?
I'd have to defer to Ajay. I don't know how frequent they do maps. I mean, this kind of caught us out of the blue. Actually, this started back in 2016. I was looking when they first started looking at it. I haven't been aware of anything for Tyler Creek recently.
So there's no way for us to know, to be anticipate having this kind of come at us from left field?
So this process of map revisions really started with the 2008 flood because in many of the communities, and Illinois was no different, the extent of the flooding that was happening in all the other communities was far greater than what those maps were showing at the time. So they said, "Well, it's been too long." Some of those maps were from 1970s. So they said, "Well, we have to reassess what the changes in the watershed have been, how the flows have changed, and how the creek is functioning so we can tell people what the true flood risk is." So it's not that they have a set timeframe that they will change these maps every five, 10 years. They look for events that might require them to reassess that. On the city's behalf, though, whenever you have better data, you can submit that, and they're obligated to change it for your benefit. But, you know, given that these maps are being revised just now, I don't anticipate any other maps to change at least for another decade or even two decades.
But I guess that's a symptom of the change in our weather. We're having more intense and more frequent intense weather events.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as you, as Mr. Rudd noted, that just even in this watershed, the flows increased by about 64%. We have looked at Seventh Avenue in St. Charles, where the flows increased by 250%. So there has been a lot of changes because of climate change, because of, you know, urbanization, because of, you know, water, you know, just flowing too fast. And also, not only the amount of rain, but the time in which the rain is falling has changed as well.
Got it. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks.
And the data that was provided is the most... And the data that was provided is the most recent data that we have based on the climate change and the gauging stations that were available that the Illinois State Water Survey used.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rudd. Ms. Paul?
Well, I did have one. Thank you for the presentation. Can you clarify, I know you mentioned in terms of the fact that this will expand the number of folks and the number of households that will be included in the floodplain. How are they actually notified of that? I think you mentioned, like, if they are, you know, once they have to renew their homeowner's insurance, their insurance company may notify them. Is that the only way they would find out or are we obligated to send something out to them?
Yes, so FEMA is part of the map revision process, is obligated to do a public meeting. So it will be up to the city to not only have your representative attend those meetings, but also to invite the affected property owners. So FEMA would be coming in and presenting those maps before they are finally adopted in 2024. The, the home insurance, as you said, those agents have an obligation to notify those homeowners as well. How much does the city want to be proactive about? I mean, that's a decision the city would have to make to bring that information forth to them.
FEMA originally had an original risk assessment, a public hearing, which actually was very, very successful because it was virtual. It was a couple of years ago and they had far more people attend. But given the number, I think we had like 70 people attend, which is quite a few for to do it virtually. But FEMA was being proactive at the time.
Great. The other question I had, I mean, because obviously the mitigation measures are rather expensive. Not that I'm advocating this, but I know a question that people might have is, do we have the option of doing nothing?
You always have that option.
Any further questions? Ms. Rauschenberg.
Thank you. Very interesting. A lot of my questions were sort of answered between Councilperson Stephan and Tish. But one of the things, so some basic information. So the need for, what was the event that you said that brought FEMA here to look at increased?
That was the 2008 storm.
The 2008 storm?
I mean, based on our experience, that's kind of what prompted FEMA to look at a lot of the sensitive watersheds across not only just Illinois, but in other states as well.
In other states as well, right. So this 100-year flood or the 500-year flood is happening more often. It's more like a, maybe, correct?
Yeah, that's where some complications happen. So, you know, when we did the project in St. Charles and we looked at what the 2008 flood event was, and, you know, you may be surprised, but that was only between a 25 and 50-year event. It wasn't even a 100-year event. So, so, you know.
I mean, there, yeah, what I'm trying to say is, are they more frequent than every 100 years these days? We can't call them, yeah. I think, was that right after our election when it flooded right up all downtown, I think? And we discussed the rain tax at that time, so people were happy they didn't have to pay, as I remember, that event. So the impacts of the need for mitigation are, you know, we're talking about changes in rain coming more often, maybe suggested by climate. And does infrastructure, the fact that, you know, the area has grown more, also is an impact?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that areas that used to be farm and fallow would just take the rain in and now it's being redirected?
So that's part of what the detention basins are that we have now with new subdivisions. Is that basically when you see a detention facility, you're putting a bucket of water in the ground and you're letting it out with a little garden hose as opposed to letting it all go downstream right away. A lot of these areas are places that have more impervious, but they never had detention. I mean, everything built in the 20s, 30s, 40s, I mean, all of that didn't have detention facilities. So as you get some of those lots to get more impervious, it adds to the runoff. But the cumulative effect of all those detention basins, they're just letting the water out slowly, which is what the intent was, to mitigate downstream flooding.
Right, in the newer development. Okay. And is the Poplar Creek watershed a typical size for a creek? Is it smaller and larger than most, or just pretty typical?
I mean, again, as Mr. Rudd said, there is 45 square miles or about 30,000 acres draining through this. So that's a pretty significant area. I mean, it depends on, every creek is different. So, I mean, I wouldn't say it's typical, but it is, it is a significant.
A significant one. And is like Tyler Creek, what other creek sheds do we have in Elgin besides Tyler and? Is it just Tyler?
Well, Tyler and Poplar are two.
Two main ones.
Two main ones.
Otter Creek comes through here.
Oh, that's right, Otter Creek.
Yeah, and then there are other smaller that feeds into these two major systems.
Okay. And so just, this is just a question. So the, at the top of the watershed, shed in South Barrington, is that coming from springs? What is the basis of the water that's coming down from there? Is it spring water?
So, yeah, so the analysis that FEMA and on behalf of FEMA, the Illinois State Water Survey did, that only takes into account the surface runoff. So they are only calculating the flow that's falling on the, on the ground and running off. So they're not, you know, measuring or quantifying the spring waters.
It's what's going into the watershed from the surface?
Yes.
Okay, so that talks about infrastructure. Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Mr. Thor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. If a person discovers that the new floodplain goes across the corner of their property, but it's 150 feet from their dwelling, is their house still in a floodplain?
Excellent question. No. So while the property is in the floodplain, but they will not be required to necessarily have flood insurance because the structure itself is not in the floodplain. And there are, and that's why we quantified 528 properties that will be impacted. Those are mostly the structures, but there are hundreds of properties that will be benefited beyond those 528 because the floodplain might not be on their properties. They can use their yard more, they can mow the grass and all that kind of thing. But, yeah, the structure is not in the floodplain.
If the floodplain went right across the corner of their garage, would that still affect their home?
If the garage is an attached garage, yes, it will. Because there are two ways FEMA looks at a structure as a whole thing in the floodplain. If it's a detached garage, then it will be an accessory structure and the house itself will not be in the floodplain. But if it is attached, it will be.
Thank you.
Sure.
Couple of things for me. I did serve on the committee when first was formed to study Poplar Creek. And I think to make it clear, this is not just an Elgin issue. This is a regional issue. We're the end of the pipe. And the flooding, a lot of it comes from upstream from us. Even though they tried to do the right things, we can't monitor them to make sure their detention bonds are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I remember the flood in, was, oh, 2008. And there was 10 feet of water in some of the homes down below Bluff City Boulevard. And this project has to correct the problem. Just to leave it is not acceptable anymore. And this puts those people at great risk. We had to evacuate people literally with boats to get them out of their home. We brought up a point about the restrictions at Route 20 and Bluff City Boulevard. Those underpasses and those bridges are, were built in the early 1900s. So they're 100 years old. And the original flows there were extremely small, 100 cubic feet per second on a high, on a high day back in the 1950s. And now we're in the thousands of cubic feet for maximum flow. So it just can't add, it's like trying to put 10 gallons of water in a teacup. And it causes problems that, in the past, we've had problems with water flowing over Willard Avenue because it got restricted, Poplar Creek got restricted going under Route 20 and the water had nowhere to go but overland and come down through Willow Creek. And those are the things that we're facing here. So I think this is a, is an issue that we have to bring up to the state and state legislator. And I think that we should ask for some assistance here. That these are issues that are being caused not just by growth in the city of Elgin and what's happened here. It's by the growth around us. And we are the end of the pipe. And these become regional issues. We have to look at correcting these things. It's never going to get any better. We're having the best day we have today. Tomorrow will be worse, the day after will be worse, and it's going to continue to get worse for us. So I think we need to do this and look for long-term solutions for some people. And some homes, we may never be able to get them out of the floodway or the floodplain. Those are the ones we need to look at purchasing. And we did that program many years ago below Bluff City Boulevard as they became available. But now we're seeing more and more homes. So I think it's timely. It's probably 20 years past due as a matter of fact. So let's get to this and I'll come up with some real answers to move forward. And then leave it to the elected people as to how we're going to pay for this. But I think we should be asking for some assistance here.
That's what we intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item C and D involve agreements with Mad Bombers Fireworks Production. Item C is the purchase of fireworks from Mad Bombers for a 20 to 25-minute display in conjunction with the July 4th fireworks event at Festival Park.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item D is the proposed agreement with Mad Bombers for the production of the 2023 Cantacan Orgullo or Sing with Pride event at Festival Park. This year, the city is producing three new concerts and one new fireworks display at Festival Park. The fireworks display in this instance, in conjunction with Cantacan Orgullo, is going to occur on September 16th. And this is kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month in partnership with the Friends of the Masons and the Gail Borden Public Library. The event will be featuring nationally recognized bands, a car parade, food and drinks, interactive artwork, and more. The fireworks display ends the day of celebration and staff is recommending the purchase of service agreement with Mad Bombers Fireworks for the 20 to 25-minute fireworks display at this event.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-1.
Item E is a master agreement with the Mutual Box Alarm System, commonly known as M A B S. M A B S is a statewide organization in which fire departments provide mutual aid assistance across state, county, and local jurisdictional boundaries to assist fire departments in need. This agreement facilitates mutual aid requests across those boundaries. The city's fire department has participated in providing aid across state boundaries as part of the Illinois statewide system since the 1960s.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item F is a public roadway expansion easement from Commonwealth Edison to widen and improve Shales Parkway and Sheldon Drive intersection. ComEd is helping the city in peak construction, the developer of the almost half-million-square-foot industrial building nearing completion at 1451 Sheldon Drive. This development was approved in 2018 with the condition that Peak widen and improve the intersection of Shales Parkway and Sheldon Drive. The improvements add a dedicated right turn lane on Shales for northbound vehicles, as well as a dedicated left turn lane on Shales for southbound traffic. Sheldon will have both a dedicated left turn lane for traffic heading south on Route 20 and a dedicated right traffic lane for traffic going north on Route 19. The existing right of ways are too small to accommodate the improvements. ComEd has agreed to grant the city an easement for widening and improving the intersection. These improvements are cost just short of $200,000 and are all being paid by the developer.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion is approved 9-0.
Item G is an economic development grant for the Haight at 166 Symphony Way. The Haight's home was built in 1890 with an original open-air freight elevator, estimated to have been put into service around 1920. The city's elevator contractor believes it's one of the oldest freight elevators in the state. The Haight has determined, unfortunately, that replacing the elevator is necessary. Replacement requires gutting the existing elevator shaft, sealing it with fire-rated drywall, building a new machine room, and installing a new enclosed cabin safety system. The elevator will be converted to both a passenger and freight elevator, enhancing accessibility for the Haight's patrons. The substantial work will take about two months to complete during which the Haight must be closed to outside business. The project will cost about $320,000. Staff is recommending the city contribute 10% of the project cost plus a 10% contingency for permits and third-party plan review to offset this substantial investment. The city's total out-of-pocket expenses would be no more than $35,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion?
Big project.
Yep. Big project. We needed one, too. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-1.
Item H is proposed amendment to the city's liquor code creating a license classification for brew pubs. After numerous discussions with Councilmember Good and Councilmember Powell lobbying Corporation Council Cogly, the two old dogs have seen fit to amend the city's liquor code to reintroduce a classification for what they call as brew pubs now. The city's liquor code previously included a classification in 1995 when the Prairie Rock Microbrewery and Restaurant was established in the city. Following the closing of Prairie Rock, the liquor code was eventually amended to remove the microbrewery license classification since there were no seekers for a long duration of time. The Illinois State Liquor Code refers to microbreweries as brew pubs. And given that a brew pub or microbrewery is seen as a potential desirable type of establishment, particularly within the downtown, it has been suggested, as I've mentioned, that the city should amend its liquor code to add back this classification. The proposed ordinance amends the city's liquor code to add the license classification for brew pubs.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Rauschenberg?
Yeah, I guess it's about time. I'm not exactly sure what took us so long. I know that I have talked to people in the brew pub world as I've gone and actually asked for donations for beer here, there, and everywhere. And they were always very leery of Elgin, saying Elgin was not welcoming breweries. And so I'm glad this is happening. And I'm hoping, besides a push by our councilperson, is there a brew pub that's interested?
Not that I am immediately aware of. And in defense, in defense, while there wasn't a classification, there's nothing that prohibited anybody from seeking an application. And that provides the council with the most, with the most opportunity in making determinations on the appropriateness of this. But we understand the benefit of being able to advertise that.
Advertise it, yeah. I will tell you that more than once, you know, why didn't you consider Elgin? Well, we just really bypassed it because everyone told us to. So, and I wasn't even sure that it was because of that, our zoning. So anyway, I'm glad to see it.
Me, too.
Ms. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Corporation Council, for working with us to get this on the agenda. And I prefer the term "season" versus "old" in terms of those of us that were working with Corporation Council to get this back on the agenda and create a license. to get this back on the agenda and create a license. I really saw this as a way, similar to what Councilperson Rocheberger said, just us being proactive and just saying, hey, we're open for business. We are interested in brew pubs. Sometimes that might be all that it takes to help get someone into the door. I think there are some folks that are interested in terms of locating here. So this just moves us one step forward in getting one eventually here in town. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Yes, question for corporate counsel. As someone who sits on the Liquor Commission, how is this going to affect the current licenses that are out there? Are we looking to re-categorize this, to cap the number of breweries that are possible? How are we going to handle this?
So this won't affect any existing licensees unless they also want to operate a brew pub. So, but this would be an alternative for them to do it. As the councilman knows, we, to provide the city council the control over whether or not to issue liquor license, we cap the number. So this, there's a section where we cap the number. And where none are issued, we put that at zero. But then it's just a ministerial step then to just, after the Liquor Commission approves a license, you're familiar with it. It's always subject to the condition that the council elect to adopt an ordinance. So that would then give the council the authority to control the issuance of these, but also, at the same time, have available the type of license that's contemplated here. So it won't affect anybody currently. And when someone comes in, they would apply, just like anyone else does now. But the additional step is required for them to come to the, then to come to the council. And those are usually consent agenda items that we put on with the number. And you see those on your agenda regularly. Licenses go up and down.
And just one more follow-up question to that. Connecting this with the gaming, like we do on the Liquor Commission, is it going to affect, is it going to work very similar, exact, or no relation at all?
Well, I would expect that the policies that the Liquor Commission and the council have applied to gaming would apply equally to these types of establishments. Gaming has typically been considered as, only as, an accessory use, avoiding the gaming cafe types of establishments. A brew pub would likely be a fairly substantial operation, given that you have brewery capacity and other things. They're not under this ordinance required. They can, but are not required to sell food. We saw that as a possible impediment to an investment. So we made the recommendation that we did that it's an alternative. But video gaming licenses are likewise capped by number. So that both liquor, the Liquor Commission would have to make a recommendation to the council to increase the number if a brew pub wanted video gaming. Okay, thank you. That's all. Anything else? Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Announcements from the council. Mr. Thor?
Thank you, Mayor. In following proper protocol, April 18th was certification of election results. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate council members that are re-elected, our mayor that's re-elected, and welcome our newest council member, who's in the back of the room, Mr. Ortiz.
Anything else from the council? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with Open Elgin. Open Elgin 2023, the free self-guided tour of Elgin's architecturally significant buildings is back this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Coordinated by the Elgin Area Chamber and Enhancing Elgin Committee of the Elgin Development Group. You are invited to visit some of the more than 25 buildings that will be open, that will open their doors for that afternoon. Open Elgin Tours lets you plan your route to explore the buildings of your choice. You can view the buildings that will be featured in this year's free tour at openelgin.com. There, you can learn a bit about each of the buildings and can download a map of the buildings to plot your course for the afternoon at openelgin.com. Each of the buildings on the tour will have a red Open Elgin flag at its entrance, so it's easily identifiable. Volunteers will also be stationed at each of the buildings to help you answer your questions and provide guidance. For further information, contact Elgin Area Chamber at 847-741-5660, or go online to openelgin.com. There's some buildings there that we don't get to see that often. And one of them that I, I mean, there's a lot of them that are interesting. But the Planetarium, you know, that belongs to U46. And that's something that maybe we went on a tour when we were in grade school. And I encourage you to see a building like that, to see the armory. Nobody really gets to see the armory. And you could just go to openelgin.com and look for yourself and enjoy your weekend. Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, I would like to announce one of my favorite things that happens in Elgin every spring, which is Bethlehem Lutheran Church's 48th Annual Strawberry Festival, which is taking place this year, Saturday, May 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Bethlehem Lutheran Church. All proceeds go to benefit several local charities, including a local mission trip to Mexico, YWCA, Paths of Elgin, American Legion, and Scout Troop 111, among others. And you can purchase strawberry shortcake, strawberry sundaes, my favorite, chocolate-covered strawberries, and jam, and baked goods, and plants, all kinds of fun stuff. So it's a great opportunity to go out and support a great cause. And this takes place again Saturday, May 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. But get there early because they do sell out. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rocheberger?
Yes, thank you. I know this is, April and May become very busy in many communities. So before you go to Open Elgin, I'm going to invite everyone again, which I announced before, to the Elgin Sustainability Commission, is having Earth Summit. It's at Elgin Community College. It's on Saturday from 9:00 till 1:00. So then afterwards, you can go to Open Elgin. And they're featuring 15 green sessions led by local and regional sustainability leaders. Again, that's at Elgin Community College, Building E, on Saturday, this Saturday morning.
Anything else from the council? Mr. Manager, anything from staff?
Just going to talk about the Earth Summit in Open Elgin. You guys have done my work for me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for reminding me. The Mayor's, please join us next Tuesday. May 2nd will be the Mayor's Award for Historical Preservation. Will be at the Frida's, I can't think of the last name of it.
Frida's?
Anyway, it's on Highland Avenue and open to the public. Please come in and there's some, see the, some of the great work that people have been doing to historical buildings and just long-time work in helping the city preserve some of our structures. So that's next Tuesday night, 7 o'clock.
Frida's Party Room.
At Frida's Party Room. Thank you. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move in second to adjourn. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene with the regular city council meeting at 7:10.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the court please call or roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
I am here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Proof of the minutes of the meeting of April 12th, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstain.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is approved eight zero with one abstention. We have no proclamations this evening, but we do have a couple of people that signed up to speak. And I believe Jen and Ben were signed up to talk about flooding. Is she still here? So your chances to come, we've already talked about that, but if you'd like to come and speak to it, please come up.
Well, this is the first time I've been to a council meeting, I didn't really know what to expect. And I see that the problem that I wanted to speak about, you guys have already agreed to a study for the water problem that has been ongoing for at least 60 years in our neighborhood. So I want to thank you for moving it forward to this stage and for Mike, for helping me with all of this. It's been a long ride because we've lived in the house for 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having trouble with the name here, but it's Veronica Walter, Fulton Street.
Okay. Sure. First of all, congratulations, Captain, on your new term. And council members, thank you for representing me, us, the citizens of Elgin. It's appreciated. I moved here 10, 11 years ago, senior citizen. I didn't want to go into any Huntley deal, whatever it called, Bell Webb. I still wanted to remain active and I felt the best way to do that was we were driving down the highway and it says, "Elgin, proactively buy your next mansion from us." So I said, "Tell my wife I can't buy your mansion, I say goodbye to your house." And we moved here, met your police chief, and were treated unbelievably. I was 59 years old, I bought my first home in Elgin, I was a Chicago school teacher for 30 years. I ended up, after we moved on Fulton, there was a little bit of crime problem. And one of your police officers says, "Well, Walter, you know, buy the building next to your apartment building." So I did. To make a long story short, and that solved the crime problem because I put my daughter on the first floor and my niece and nephew on the second floor. So I put close to half a million dollars in Elgin by the time I was done. And my neighbor, I live on Fulton where you have the houses that face villa, and this is the reason I'm here. And the back of their houses face my kitchen and my dining room. And a new neighbor moved in, and when he moved in, he decided, and I'm so sorry, Mayor, I've given you a 3-1-1, probably the worst times of their life the past 10 years, but you know, I just write and pull my hair out. And I tried to explain to him that the garbage cans should be facing his house and not the street or my dining room and kitchen. It's only 10 feet, my garbage cans are like right there where that podium is. So when I have company between the flies and it's a Tuesday and pulling all his garbage cans out, I can't have my dining room windows open or my kitchen window. I have pictures on the phone here. And I called code and, you know, the reality of it is, it's his property. So I'm not going to argue with him on his property because he owns it, he worked his whole life. I offered to build him a corral for his garbage cans, his trash cans. He wasn't receptive to that. And he still has space on his one side of the garage, it's between another garage, right next to it. He won't use it. So I guess the reason I'm here is I talked to Aaron Constantino and back when that was his job before he went into the computer section. And I said, "Aaron," I said, "I don't know what to do." I said, "I have a wooden fence that I had installed, and when it was styled, it was styled not to block out neighbors, it was left with spaces so my neighbors could see my backyard and my pine. I don't like straight fences, I never did. I would like my neighbors to see the birds and the stuff I have going on." But he won't pick his weeds, he won't, the foliage takes the fence, opens it up after six months. I can't have people come in, pull my fence up, reinstall it, and clear all his weeds out. So we're at a loss, we're, I'm 71 almost, I'm right behind you, Mayor, you know. And this is a city where people work together, and you don't do it by forcing your neighbor, yelling at your neighbor, and I never did that. I never had any words with him. I've let him make all the decisions and any words I had were, your 3-1-1 took them. And I just feel that if I put up this fence, I need to know, I need to know that someone doesn't pop up in code or management and say, "Walter, what are you doing?" When I already talk, even though Aaron's in computers right now, that I was given permission to put up a nice beige metal fence that won't be seen from the street in the historic district. My home will be celebrating, you'll see a sign in front of it. It's going to be 100 years old and it hasn't been torn apart inside, has not been, it's got all the original crown molding, not, it was owned by one of your councilmembers, Dorothy, oh, she lived here.
Doherty.
Doherty.
Petty Doherty.
Okay, I bought her home. And I think she'd appreciate, not only that, that I'm a Democrat, and she would appreciate that I kept the home exactly the way she had it and I did not modernize it. So when someone else inherits the home, it will be that way. Same thing with the property, the properties can't be sold separately anymore because it was such a problem for the police department that I've had my turn to make my will that, hey, when this property ever goes up for sale, this shared driveway stuff and people, it's got to, you know, stop. It causes a lot of problems for the police and so I took care of that. But anyways, to get back to it, I want to put up a fence this summer. I don't want to go against the grain of anyone in the administration. I did talk to the person that was in charge at the time, but I've been in and out of the hospital with cancer, so it's been hard to take care of a lot of things. So with that, that's all I have to say, and just congratulations and I hope a successful year for all of you. It's not all about me.
If you're talking about putting a fence, then my suggestion is make sure you get a survey, a good survey of your lot line.
Yes.
And do that appropriately first. And that's where we run into a lot of problems, that people think, well, here's the lot line because that's where I was told it was, and it doesn't necessarily work out like that.
Yes, Mayor.
And just, I would follow up with that and talk to the people in code and they can help you, give you that direction, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Mayor, you have a very fine secretary. She's taken three or four phone calls from me to cool my heels off. And, no, she's a fine lady, so please thank her also for me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to bids. First item is bid number 23-023, Pavement Making Program.
Move to award the, move to award this bid to pavement making, excuse me, the 2023 Pavement Making Program bid to Maintenance Coatings Company in the amount of $363,815.
Second.
And move in second, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item two is bid number 23-024, Portland Cement Contract.
Yes, Mayor, I make the motion to award this contract to Ozinga Ready Mix Concrete in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Abstain.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Other business, first item is a resolution authorizing execution of a change order number two with Ramball Americas Integrated Solutions Incorporated, formerly known as O'Brien Gear Incorporated of North America Professional Services in connection with environmental investigations relating to a former leaking underground storage tank at 1010 Wing Street, Elgin, Illinois. Move for approval.
Second.
And move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item three is a resolution authorizing execution of a change order number two with Ramball Americas Integrated Solutions Incorporated, formerly known as O'Brien Gear Incorporated of North America Professional Services in connection with environmental investigations relating to a former leaking underground storage tank at 1010 Wing Street, Elgin, Illinois. Move for approval.
Second.
And move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item two is a resolution authorizing execution of change order number three with Ramball and O'Brien Gear Incorporated of North America for the environmental remediation of City of Elgin property at 40 Ann Street. Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item three is a resolution authorizing execution of a collection services agreement with Municipal Collections of America Incorporated for collecting services regarding unpaid parking and adjudication fines. Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item four is a resolution authorizing execution of an integrative agreement with the State of Illinois acting by and through its Department of Transportation for certain improvements at Illinois State Route 31 and US Route 20. Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item five is a resolution approving funding in connection with the agreement between the State of Illinois acting by and through its Department of Transportation and the City of Elgin for certain improvements at Illinois Route 31 and US Route 20.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call or roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero. Item seven is an ordinance approving, an ordinance amending ordinance number G9-01 as amended by ordinance number G56-18 and ordinance number G8-21 for a portion of a planned area business district at 351 to 365 South Randall Road.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval, and we have a public comment. Jeanette Mahalik would like to speak to the issue.
I'm actually speaking to this one after this. The High Haven Dispensary, the CEO is quoted as saying that High Haven will be investing a considerable amount of money, therefore they have a lot, have done a lot of homework on this. I say that they've been reading the wrong textbooks to prepare for this test. As Mr. Keller from
Move in second for approval, and we have a public comment. Jeanette Mahalik would like to speak to the issue.
I'm actually speaking to this one at the moment. Is this during the High Haven Dispensary? The CEO is quoted as saying that High Haven will be investing a considerable amount of money. Therefore, they have a lot, have done a lot of homework on this. I say that they've been reading the wrong textbooks to prepare for this test. As Mr. Keller from Top Shelf Sports Cards in the same strip mall so accurately stated, this is not a referendum on marijuana. This is about common sense and conditional use permits asking for an exception. And even though pot is not my thing, I agree with him. The lack of parking is definitely a major concern. Have you ever been to either the new or the old location of the dispensary in St. Charles on a Saturday? It's been quite a while, but I had been there with my adult children when it was in the industrial park, and I would sit in the car while they would go in and make their purchases. Anyway, on Saturday, there would be lots of parking at the dispensary customers to use. While I was there, I could study what was going on. All the parking spots were taken. There was a line of cars waiting to get inside, into the parking lot, and a line of customers queued up outside in an industrial park. Now it has relocated to a space zone for retail with lots of parking. Much more for the, much more for the smaller city of St. Charles than what is available for High Haven in a city of nearly 115,000 people. What we are talking about is a small strip mall that only has 54 parking spaces on the property for all of the businesses located there, even though it should have nearly twice that number, 100. I have patronized two businesses in their strip mall, Team Rehab and the DD. I can tell you, after four o'clock on a weekday, there are a lot of those parking spaces already being used by T Rehab's customers and staff. On Saturdays, that won't be an issue. But I can imagine it will be difficult to get in line for the DD drive-through because of the line of cars along the private road made up of those just trying to get a parking space for the dispensary. It will also be difficult for customers of the other family-oriented businesses to find adequate parking, potentially driving away customers from at least three businesses. Mr. Keller seems to be spot on. There isn't adequate parking to accommodate a dispensary at this location. And the only parking study that was done resulted in what has been labeled questionable data from a source that the petitioner engaged. I propose that you table this vote until you get adequate data. Let's see what the real facts are. Otherwise, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? We have a motion? Any discussion? Mr. Shaw?
I would concur. I visited my first marijuana dispensary this weekend to inquire at the front desk. They asked for my ID and I said, "No, I did not want to go on record on being at that facility." But you could definitely tell that it was busy. And so I have to concur. I, it's going to be interesting to see how it goes through. I guess my, my concern would be is, you know, if we're trying to keep retail footprint full, I would have to imagine either the long-term plan is either some of the other businesses will go out of business in that same facility, the dispensary will expand out and take all the parking in that whole area or something. But if we think that it's going to continue to function the way it is with that many separate businesses, I don't see how that's going to be possible. So I will continue to vote no for this initiative.
Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes. Excuse me. Abstain.
Mayor Captain?
No, the motion's approved six-two with one abstention. Item eight is an ordinance granting a conditional use for an adult cannabis dispensing organization in the planned area business district and ARC arterial road corridor overlay district at 353 to 355 South Randall Road.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Abstain.
Mayor Captain?
No, the motion's approved six-two with one abstention. Consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
And move in second for approval. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved eight zero with one abstention. This one is business.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine zero.
It is, it is, it's supposed to be switched, yeah. The next regular is six.
Yeah, announcements. The next, the next city council meeting will begin at 6:00 PM on May 10, 2023. That is to allow for the swearing-in ceremonies at 6:00 PM. The next regular city, the next committee of the whole meeting will be, what's it going to be? Will be shortly after that, like 6:20 or 6:15. I'm going to have to do this on the wing here, so. And the regular city council meeting then would be at 7:00 on May 10, 2023. Lieutenant, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move in second to adjourn. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger? Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned.